Good evening, everyone. Everyone will call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call and roll?
Flornoy?
Here.
Howley?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel, in the consent agenda, we will be tabling the or removing the annual financial report. We'll take that at our next meeting. For additions, Melanie, we're going to ask you to give a Step 1 report under Administrative Reports. And is there anything else that counsel like to add to the agenda? Or, okay. Thank you. Well, then, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the August 22 meeting, our special meeting on September 2 as well. The August 26 payroll of $91,514.62, September 9 payroll of $87,945.84. We have the annual TIF report, a resolution of employment for the water department, Matthew Tiller, and approval of claims in the amount of $571,519.33, of which a payment of $146,739.79 for our Step 1 conveyance project. Any questions regarding the consent agenda? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes, but abstained from the September 2 minutes.
Howley?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our public forum and appearances and its fault. And we have Oktoberfest represented here today by Dave Neff and Karen Haring. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Chief Thomas, city council members, and the public who are in attendance. Karen and I would like to let you know that we're celebrating 10 years of Oktoberfest. So this is a decade's worth of celebrating our heritage, I guess that's the best way to put it, and making an enjoyable night for all those who are in attendance in the city of Fairfield. Forum has been filled out and also distributed to you as to what our request is, basically to be able to utilize the square for the primary activities of a carriage ride. One change in this, we thought originally it would start and finish on the south side of the square, but at our Friday meeting, we were informed that as vendors are in need of more space, there will be more food on the south side, and we hate to slow down the food process. So the carriage will enter and exit on the crosswalk across from where the Elks Lodge is on the west side of the square. So that's the primary change in what we have done. My understanding that Tammy Jones, a member of our community, has spoken with you, chief, so that you have an understanding of what we're-
Definitely been in touch and easy to work with.
Okay, planning and doing. Location on the northeast quadrant of the square for our beer garden is the primary request that we have this evening. And Karen, anything else you'd like to-
The carriage rides will be free again.
Carriage rides will be free. Convention and Visitors Bureau helped underwrite this a year ago, so this will help encourage folks to participate in riding north on Main up to Grimes, Grimes to Court, Court back to Broadway or Burlington, excuse me. Are there any questions from the counsel?
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations on 10 years. Those are one of the great things that contributes to the year-round festivities that we are fortunate enough to celebrate here. So thank you for all you do to make this possible for us.
Thank you.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the request. And again, this would be for a beer garden on the square and then also the areas we need to block off for the carriage ride.
So moved.
Second move. Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy.
Before you take your-
And John, yes, you have your-
For the 10th time, I offer my support to your wonderful event, but I-
Principal objection.
Keeping with my principal objection to serving alcohol in a public property. So we both know.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any other comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, 6 to 1. We appreciate it.
Thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, counsel, we have Claudine Stanley, who is going to present a new event based on an outdoor artist flea market. Claudine, if you could come to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Claudine Stanley. I moved to Fairfield from Chicago in 1979 and started a business called Universal Secretary. Some of you may have known about that business. I currently have an office in Artist Alley next to the spa, the pet spa, and across from LeAnn's Sewing Shop. And we were all talking one day out in the alley, and we were interested in having a flea market to coincide with the October 7 art walk. But this would be all day as well, like from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. For those of you, I'm going to pass these pictures of Artist Alley from the north side and the south side. The north side, you can see the courthouse. In the south side, you can see the gazebo. The city of Fairfield beautifully renovated it several years ago with flower boxes and cobblestones, a street of cobblestone. But nothing much has been going on in Artist Alley for quite a while. In fact, it is somewhat neglected. Some of the lights are out. It's kind of dim. It sort of looks creepy at night sometimes. But anyway, we want to change that and have this flea market for the merchants. We were all interested in selling our products. For instance, LeAnn's Sewing Shop has clothing and shoes that they've had for many years that they want to get rid of. I have office, garden, household, and collectibles that I want to sell. The pet spa is, would like to have an open house and sell their pet products. Manuel Carradon, you might know him. He also lives in an apartment in Artist Alley. He wants to sell some art. Connie's Hair Salon will participate in the evening. And we're working on getting some music during the day, not to interfere with the evening art walk. So we're requesting permission to not only have the flea market on October 7, but also maybe to add some outdoor lighting. Manuel noticed that there were some outdoor plugs in the alley that you can plug in, but we wanted permission to use that and possibly get the lighting fixed, the regular lighting fixed in the alley. I do have some people signed up already for the flea market. We're not quite finished in getting all our merchants because I wanted to make sure we had permission from the city council to have the event. So does anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Claudine. Now, the lighting that you're referring to, is it the mounted lights that are on the sides of the buildings, or are they overhead lights?
Both.
Both.
Both. In fact, the south side of, yeah, the south side of the alley is really dark.
Okay. So Daryl is nodding. I mean, he will check those, so maybe the meeting goes long enough tonight, Daryl, you can check them on the way home. See which ones are out.
I have a question.
Sure.
Claudine, so it's just not clear about your request. You mentioned the local people in that art alley who are going to be part of this.
Right.
But are you inviting other people? Is it going to be like a flea market, like a big rummage sale? Or is it going to be just those people? I was just curious about that.
We're kind of, I was thinking about that on the way over. I think maybe we'll just limit it to mostly the merchants in Artist Alley and maybe one of the furniture dealers on the square, the secondhand shops. There's plenty of them now. I can, we can invite one of them. We'll see. I just want to make sure that it's a full enough event.
I'm not asking you to limit it. I'm just wondering what your idea is.
Yeah. It's possible that other merchants will-
But it's for merchants. It's not for like people that do a garage sale?
No, I'm hoping that, I mean, flea market has everything. It has collectibles and furniture and a few steps up from a rummage sale.
Okay. So, and your, is your request, well, of course, that's a no-traffic alley anyway. It's just essentially permission to utilize it for the vendors that would be out there.
Right.
Okay. So we're, so essentially, counsel, you're not really approving blocking that. It's within the definition of how the alley is used right now. So it sounds like it'd be a nice addition.
But it would be restricted to just the vendors in the alley then, right?
No, that's not what she said. I asked her-
Well, I know. That's why I wasn't clear. I mean, so is somebody from-
Doesn't sound like the planning is complete. Sounds like it may be more.
They might invite others if they don't feel like they have enough to fill it up or something.
Yeah, I have about four or five of the vendors in the alley already, but I thought if we could add a musician in there, that's always good. And obviously not an artist. I mean, there's nobody, there's no musician that I know of in Artist Alley right now, so.
But also just other things for people to be able to buy, so it's more interesting, more enticing for people to go down there and go.
Right.
So I don't see that as a problem.
Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, would entertain a motion then to approve the request for the use of the alley for a artist flea market?
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Claudine. Next, counsel, we'll move to our resolution and action items. And the first is to simply set a public hearing for an amendment to the MUM North Campus Village Phase 5, and that would be at our next meeting, September 26 at 7:00 p.m. So entertain a motion to set that public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing also set on sale of a segment of land adjacent to Walton Lake. Darren, can you just tell us what that request is?
This was brought up at a property committee meeting that we recently had. Mike has the full details. Mr. Harmon has the full details on this. It was an offer to purchase land that the city did not currently have available or open to the market. This person approached us and subsequently has brought forth a plat for acquisition and has given an offer to the city.
Okay.
So here, I'll let Mike take over.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. The offer currently right now is $2,500 in the acreage. We can discuss more at the public hearing, but it's for a fraction of an acre on that parcel that juts out to the northeast of Walton Lake. And the intent there is the property owner would like to construct a dam and that would provide access to a small subdivision that he's planning in that area. So we, $2,500, it has went through the appraisal, an independent appraisal process, and that is what we believe is in line with fair market value for that piece of property.
Okay. So we'll set a public hearing. Thank you for the explanation. Set that public hearing for September 26, our next meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Okay, thanks again. We have, our next item is to consider as final the bid package number 10 for fire sprinklers. Calvin, could you give us an update on that?
Yep. We got a retained amount of $2,955.20, and that's from Blackhawk Automatic Sprinklers. And since I've been there, we haven't had any issues with the sprinklers. None of them have leaked, or none of the heads have popped off them or anything like that. And knock on wood, we never have to actually use them. But we've actually had the guy, one of the guys who was there to install them, came by a few weeks ago and showed Preston and myself what to do if they were to leak or were to break, how we can turn them off. But other than that, we haven't had any issues with them at all.
Okay. Thank you. So on that recommendation, counsel, entertain a motion to approve, accepting the final for the sprinkler package.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you, Calvin.
Yep.
Next item, counsel, is consideration of a master facilities and restoration services agreement with Interstate Power and Light Company, or Alliant. I know that just came through Environmental Franchise. John, can you tell us about that agreement?
We did just meet about this before this meeting. This is a very basic framework for allowing us to hire Alliant to do some work for us. They're not a contractor that we ordinarily hire out for. And they would be specifically doing some work on our square, changing light bulbs in poles that we can't, that are too high for our usual service people to get to. And so they have the standard kind of boilerplate agreement that they asked that we sign before they do work for us. And our committee felt that there was nothing from our side that we thought was unusual about it or, you know, seemed to be a problem. And yet, we thought, we have a city attorney, we would just as soon have him also take a look at it before the agreement is executed. But in order to just make it simple, and since it's up for consideration right now, what we did was, we agreed to present it to the council for approval tonight with the idea that it not get executed until our city attorney actually looks at it again, in which case they could intervene and we could look at it again or negotiate. Apparently, Alliant doesn't change this agreement. It's either we accept it or we just get someone else to do the work. But at least we thought we should do that. So that would be our motion to go ahead and accept the agreement pending city attorney approval.
How long do you want to do it for?
The agreement?
Three years.
Oh, we didn't really discuss that. I don't, my personal preference is three years is fine. I mean, whatever is, whatever seems reasonable. It's not something I want to look at again in recent years.
What have we done in the past for this service?
Ma'am.
What are we replacing this with?
Daryl? How did we replace those light bulbs in the past? We never replaced them? Oh, we just let them burn out, and there's several of them are not.
I should say that, though. We have with live wire stuff, some of the electricity to the, all the dinosaur poles.
Yeah.
We don't have electricity. We don't know where to get it from. And so who better to know where to get the electricity from than Alliant?
Right.
Because the underground wiring is pretty much shot, so we need electricity from someplace else.
I see.
Okay. So your proposal then, John, is to pass this agreement this evening pending final recommendation from the city attorney?
Yes.
If there are no objections from city attorney, this isn't going to come back to us.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so-
That's my motion.
That was our report from our committee.
Okay.
Right. And my motion right now.
Okay. So motion by Revulinski to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, and there are several parts to this. This is regarding the urban renewal plan and TIF district that would be established for Phase 5 of North Campus Village. Mike, can you talk to us about everything that's in this resolution before the counsel?
Thank you, Mayor. As you remember, the counsel provided preliminary approval of a TIF district for North Campus Village Phase 5. And so we're at the point now, we're ready to start the official proceedings to begin that TIF district. So this resolution before you tonight will set a date for the consultation of proposed plan and appoint me as the city designee to host that consultation. And that's essentially a consultation with the taxing bodies to allow them to have input on the TIF district and make suggestions regarding the TIF plan. It also directs that the consultation be mailed to all affecting taxing bodies. It calls for a public hearing on the proposed plan, which will be set for October 10. It directs that notice to be published not more than four days and not less than, excuse me, not less than four days and not more than 20 days before the public hearing. It also directs that a copy of the TIF plan be put on file here at City Hall for review by the public. And it refers the plan to our Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and written recommendation back to counsel. So a number of things within this resolution that starts the process to establish a TIF district for the North Campus Phase 5.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
What taxing bodies are involved? When you mention taxing bodies, isn't it just us?
School.
School district.
Okay.
County.
I understand.
The hospital. Jefferson County, or I'm sorry, Indian Hills.
Okay.
Thanks. And as you mentioned, Mike, we'll set a public hearing for that particular piece.
So the consultation meeting is set for September 19 at 1:00 p.m., and the public hearing will be set for October 10 at the regular council meeting.
Okay. All right, very good. So counsel, entertain a motion then to approve this resolution to get those important steps underway.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. As to your next item, which is the amendment to number 2 of Terracotta, we are going to table. Don't need an explanation on that. So we will move to the next several items, which all have to do with land acquisition on Libertyville Road. We have a number of individual resolutions to approve for each landowner. I'm going to invite city attorney Marcy up because I think we have amendments for several, if not all of them.
Right. And I'll probably include Melanie in this. She provided you a chart that has all of these acquisitions on it, as agreed, basically. So it's been handed around. What you have in front of you, after you met in closed session and we discussed purchase agreements and understanding with different owners, and you came on and approved, consistent with the flow chart, the way we did the agreements at that time was basically to authorize us to proceed to accept those in open session. And here we are in open session. You did that that night in principle, but your resolution that you look at on each of these is, I won't necessarily call it cookie cutter, but it's pretty close to Title 6B, which is your eminent domain statute in Iowa. It has everything in there that your city has done to afford due process to each of the people you're acquiring from. And so your language will be similar in all of these. Each of those persons who you're acquiring from can rely on this as proof that this was acquired by the city through the 6B procedure. It's something they can take to their CPA or tax preparer, and it fits under a category on their, if they itemize, as far as classifying, this is a particular type of property transaction that would be characterized as some deductible loss, basically to them, as opposed to a gain to them. And so from that standpoint, that's what the resolution is, therefore, generally. But on each of the resolutions, there is a reference on page 3 to the specifics of the agreement. And it shows a sum of monetary payment, but it also refers you to an attached spreadsheet. Let's take 2072 Libertyville Road, which you probably have on your tablets. That affords an acquisition price to Mrs. Perkins that includes $1,350. But then if you look at the spreadsheet at the back of these documents, which also include a signed purchase agreement and an explanation sheet, the explanation sheet at the back shows that her actual compensation is $100 higher than that because we're also paying for an abstracting to support the easement that will result from this at the end of this. Then there is an easement sketch that goes along with the purchase agreement that shows exactly what is being acquired from her. So we'll use that as an example. It happens to be the top of the sheet that is your spreadsheet that Melanie has provided an update today. And probably what we need to do is we need to go through and at least make reference to each of these locations separately, mentioned in the minutes that a resolution was considered and the vote. And at that point, these resolutions will become attachments to the documents that ultimately get recorded. And essentially, I guess if you have some questions about what's in the resolution or on the spreadsheet, Melanie and I are here to answer those questions as we go through these. So that's my intro, but there may be some other questions that I haven't addressed.
I'll just mention, John, that on the spreadsheet, there are several categories of cost, the main one being the cost of easement.
Right.
The second would be abstract, which it appears everyone is benefiting from.
Exactly.
Other cash compensations, you have four properties there that are receiving additional cash compensations. And then you have compensation towards laterals. You have three properties that are receiving compensation there, and then you have a total. So as we go through each one, we can point those out, point out that that, those are all of the different elements that will go into the total.
You'll also see on that spreadsheet that there is a compensation calculation, both for permanent-
Permanent and-
-easement and for a temporary easement. The temporary easements are intended to expire ordinarily in 18 months to two years. The permanent easement, all of this is installed below the surface of the ground, but it does result in a permanent taking in that you can't build on this, and you have to leave it accessible to the public utility. So that's the main reason for the compensation is that restriction.
Okay.
And none of these are different than what we discussed in closed session?
No. This is a summary of how you came out of closed session. And the closed session did, on its spreadsheet, showed that there were a number of alternatives that these individuals could elect. This summarizes what's been decided with each individual, doesn't Melanie? So that's where we are. You can rely on the spreadsheet as what each settlement reflects, and that spreadsheet will be attached to each of these resolutions that you are asked to approve.
Okay. So we're, okay, so we don't need to amend the amount that is actually right now printed on the resolution?
No, because there's a stated amount for compensation. It's cash compensation, but it also refers you to the spreadsheet, which is the rest of the story. For instance, if there's a partial compensation in cash and the rest of it amounts to picking up half the cost of a lateral installation, that is represented on the spreadsheet.
And I know that this is all public information anyway, but is it appropriate that all property owners receive the full spreadsheet?
They will get a copy back. I don't know if they've already gotten their signed copies.
No, they haven't seen the spreadsheet, so we can just pull the individual property owner-
I would prefer to just pull the individual information.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that would accompany in another document, or should we just amend the amounts?
That would be the counsel's decision.
Follow what I'm trying to determine here. So in other words, rather than everyone receiving a spreadsheet with all of the different settlement, proposed settlement prices, that they receive either a document that just has their breakdown of those spreadsheet information?
That's easy to do, Your Honor.
Okay, so we'll just do it.
We can single-line it.
Yeah.
To make sense.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is your intent to go through each one of these individually?
Yes.
Okay.
And each has been already signed by the property owner, right?
Yes.
The agreements have already been signed off.
Right. These are all people. These are all people that are.
Okay.
Complete on their side. We just have to do it on our side.
So, so council, as we go through these, I will just list the different areas of compensation and a total, and then that's what we'll ask for approval as we go through each one. Melanie, anything else you need to add?
I just wanted to point out, as you're going through it, the column D, the compensation towards the laterals, is a negative on the total cash compensation. So what these, those four, no, three individuals are receiving, for example, 20992, they're going to be connecting to the sewer. And so, instead of accepting cash for the easement, they're going to put that cash towards, they'll have the city's contractor construct a lateral.
Thank you, okay.
That's worth 170 feet.
We're looking at the line above it, but.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Okay, council, so we'll go through these individually, and the first one is 2072 Libertyville Road, Janelle Perkins, and the total compensation is $1,450, of which $1,350 is for the cost of the easement and $100 for extract. So entertain a motion to approve that land acquisition. Moved by Rev. Valinsky, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next is 2078, and that is the Merrill's, and the total compensation is $400. There is no cost of easement, the costs are abstract, and $300 in other cash compensation. Total of $400.
We're going to request that that gets tabled. We discussed in closed session a little bit about that property. This will come back in front of you.
Okay. Good, council, we will table 2078. We'll move to 2080, that is the Millers. We have a compensation of $2,100 for the cost of the easement, $100 for the cost of the abstract, $3,350 other cash compensation, for a total of $5,550. Entertain a motion to approve land acquisition. Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. We'll move to 2092, that is the War Life Lutheran Church. We have compensation for easement of $2,070, abstract of $100. And then again, as Melanie explained, that will be substituted for compensation towards a lateral, so we subtract that. The total compensation, $100. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Rev. Valinsky.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. We move to two lots, 2094 and 2096, Jefferson County Health Center, $100 for abstract total compensation there.
I have a question on this resolution.
No, we're giving them 170 feet of you.
Why wasn't it in the cost of easement, Melanie? Like, the other one was?
Because of how the hospital negotiated the easement.
I see.
Some of the people, they opted for the cash, and they just, they wanted the 170 feet.
The question I have on this one is at the very top of the resolution, the parcel number. So that had two actual addresses in one parcel number?
Correct.
The parcel number's not listed.
On the resolution.
On the resolution.
Several of them don't have a parcel number. Listen to.
So the third property isn't accounted for?
Oh. Well, I mean. That's a C and C's, but they just.
It's listed on our end of things. I just want to make sure it gets put onto the actual resolution.
I do not have the number.
It's here. It's on our agenda. I just want to make sure you guys know that it's not.
John, are you looking for it somewhere else in the resolution?
No, I'm looking at the easement sketches.
Okay.
Which are what the owner understood we were taking, so.
Okay.
There are three of those.
That have easement numbers or parcel numbers on them?
They actually don't. Well, let's see, they all come out of a parent parcel, and then there's a description.
There are three attachments or three images at the end of the agreement.
So do you want to propose to amend the resolution to include?
The parcel number.
The all three lots.
And then get them amended? Okay, so we have a motion by Anderson to approve the $100, along with including the parcel numbers for the three lots.
Second.
Second by Rev. Valinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? We move to lots 2065 and 2067, the Diath's. There is a cost of easement of $6,120, $100 for the abstract. They are also going to take that compensation in a lateral, so the total compensation cost will be $100. And, let's see, and then explanation for the 300 feet at $12,000.
So they have 600 feet of, well, right now, the two apartment buildings share a lateral, so the negotiation was that the city would put in 300 feet in order to be able to split those, and then the remaining portion of the easement cost would go towards the other lateral. So they're going to get about one and a half laterals compensated with this easement. So, the motion would be for 100 cash compensation plus 300 feet of lateral at the contract price.
Okay, great.
Move approval.
Thank you. Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Move on to 2069, Kraus, and that's $10,770 in compensation, 100 in abstract. They will also be utilizing the $10,770 towards a lateral, so the total approval for compensation is $100.
So moved.
Moved by Rev. Valinsky.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? We move to, this is, is that, okay, so, is that a phone number or an address? Hang on a second.
Parcel number.
That's parcel number, okay. So, the next is Mayumi Cody, and the compensation is $10,440 for the lateral, $100 for the abstract, and that is your total, $10,540 for approval of that parcel.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Three more to go. 2101, Stephen and Susan Booth, and that's $3,060 plus the 100 abstract, plus 200 other compensation, for a total of $3,360 for this easement.
Move approval.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Rev. Valinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. 2105, Rodney and Taryn Ryan, $3,060 for easement compensation, $100 abstract, $1,000 other compensation, for a total of $4,160.
Move approval.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Rev. Valinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. 2115, James and Rebecca Schwartz, $3,060 for easement, 100 for abstract, a total of $3,160.
Move approval.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? That completes our resolutions for this evening, council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a stretch.
Well done. Well, we'll have another handful in a couple of weeks.
All right, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Next, council, I want to mention in my report that we had a long-awaited follow-up phone call today, conference call with Moody's. And Travis, myself, Mike, and Joy were on the call for about 90 minutes, going over the city's current financial status and filling them in on a lot of the policy changes that we've made in the last year and a half. The review is going to take place over the remainder of this week. We will receive another phone call on Friday morning with their results prior, about two hours prior to them, to releasing them. We thought the phone call was very positive. We'll see how that ends up, but certainly, we've got a lot to be proud of, and how much we did accomplish in a short period of time since that last evaluation. So we're hoping for good results on Friday, so we'll keep everyone posted as soon as we know anything. Mike, anything to add to that?
Well said, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, council, we'll move to our committee and board reports, property committee.
We've already reported on that. That was the only agenda item, the purchase of property.
Great, thank you. Environmental franchise, same story?
Same story, yes.
Okay, we're done there. Very good. All right, so I'd ask Melanie at this point to give us a Step 1 report, please.
On your consent agenda, where SM Hendige's claim is listed there, on that link is the first progress report for the Step 1 project. We have monthly progress reports with USDA on the first Tuesday of every month, so I'll be attaching those to the agenda. They're fairly short, but it lets us know what's happening within the next month. So if you haven't been on 34 on the south bypass, you need to head that way to see the Step 1 construction going, lots of big equipment. Well, there was lots of big equipment out there last week. But they have stripped the top soil from the plant to 34 and built a construction entrance off of the south side of 34. They have dug the hole for the bore pit underneath Highway 34. They'll be, take them about a month to bore the 72-inch hole underneath 34. We would be expecting, as the newspaper article said tonight, that work would begin on the north side of 34 two weeks to a month from now, which at that time, the trail will be closed, and that's when they'll be finishing up the bore and doing the work right there. They're expecting that the concrete pipe, or not the concrete, the HOVOS pipe will be delivered in about two weeks, so we'll really be seeing multiple crews out there by the end of the month. This morning, also, the supervisors approved an easement for the contractor. Originally, we only had, we only had an access for the contractor off of the south side of 34 or the eastbound lane, and through discussions with the contractor and DOT, DOT has allowed a place for them to have an access off of the north side of Highway 34. However, this didn't, where they were allowing it, didn't line up with the easements the city already had. So there was an additional, about 500 feet along the trail that the county granted today. So now the contractor can build an, or an access off of 34 north to the trail, then they'll go through, on the trail, to Congress property where the city already has an easement. But that will be, with this project, we're doing what's called field orders, which is basically documented, change orders that don't have a price change. So with this, the contractor will do all the restoration of the trail, construction of the entrance, and restoration of the trail at their cost. So we'll be documenting that over the next week, but the supervisors did approve that today. As far as time and dollars, that, we're at about 5%, or the contractors spent about 5% of both the calendar days and the budget of the project, so. Got to start. I'm looking forward to getting up, maybe Tom can take me up in his plane, or at least Bob can take me up in the plane and check out the project from the air. It's pretty neat to see that large of equipment here in Fairfield. We don't have this kind of work every day, so. That is the Step 1 update. Let me, just let me know if you have any questions. And again, as the paper mentioned tonight, that we, as far as the trail closure, we'll keep that up to date on the Trails Council website.
Great, thank you, Melanie. Any other questions, council? All right, thank you. Chief Thomas, we have another event in October coming up.
What has become one of the most difficult decisions of police chief estimates. Every year, there are a lot of groups that wanted input this year. I'm happy to say we have landed, and I'm asking for the approval of the council on Monday night, October 31.
The real Halloween.
Yes, the actual real Halloween this year. Interferes with a few things that the Fairfield community schools, but not as much as it would on Saturday night. So we're requesting your folks' approval for that date from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. as usual.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson to approve October 31 as trick-or-treat night in Fairfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
You're in favor.
Thank you. Counsel, that takes us through our open agenda. We have a closed session at this point, time to discuss some real estate business, so entertain a motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you all for coming this evening. We'll go into closed session at this time.